Okay, do so by watching the livestream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by calling into one of the phone numbers listed for this meeting on the Public Webcast and Meeting Materials webpage. And with that, thank you for joining us. And with that, I will turn it directly over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'm excited to be here today, giving you an update on the work on the ad hoc, police policy reform work from the ad hoc committee. And I'm joined by a lot of people today, most notably Municipal Judge Greg Gill and Police Auditor Leah Pitcher. And we have a number of other people that helped with the kind of sorting and sounding board that I'll introduce. I have very few slides to show you, so I know that'll, that'll be good because we all get exhausted by that somewhat, but I think it'll help guide a little bit of the process. All right. So I'm gonna say just a little bit about where we left off. When we last met with you in July, I felt like we left here with kind of two teams in a toolbox. And so those two teams included the identified sorting team of folks that were going to go through the recommendations and put them in the matrix, which was the myself, the police auditor, the city attorney, the police chief, and a representative from the Employee Resource Center. And we left with kind of an established council sounding board, which included Counselor Jennifer Yeh, Counselor Allen Zelenka, and Counselor Greg Evans. And we had shared this matrix with you around how we were planning to go through each recommendation and mark kind of like who's the, you know, who's the decision maker? What needs to change? What are all the different factors? And as we dug into this matrix, as we predicted during that meeting, it got very complex and almost very challenging to do. And there were some things that really... Sorry, did that just switch my view?
No.
Okay. It did on my computer. What ended up happening was the depth of the recommendations as we started to read through them. It just got really hard to place them, very challenging to take that complexity and click the boxes. The other thing that happened is it just, things got really redundant. So, for example, for every one of the places where there was something that was happening with police policy, it, you know, on every one of them, there'd be a police policy change, a training, a training requirement, a policy requirement, a bargaining requirement. And it just felt like we were just checking boxes and checking boxes and creating this very large spreadsheet with a lot of checkboxes. So we checked in with the sounding board and talked about how do we, how do we simplify this, make it less redundant, and really get to the things that people really care about? So that's what really came out of this was it did help say, here's the things that we think people really need to be able to track, including you and the community. So we simplified way down, and I'm not going to walk through every line item. I am going to just highlight a couple of things, call attention to a couple of things so that it helps guide your conversation. So across the top, so this is the first page, we added a reference number on the far-left side so that when you're talking about this and when people are asking us questions, they don't have to get into the detail of UF-112 and where is that going to show up on the sheet? So this is, you'll be able to have your conversation today about number five, or eight, or nine, and it's just easier to track. Those reference numbers will still go back to the original report. So if people want more information, they can, they can definitely dive into that. And then we got really clear about what is the pathway to implementation? And then some really rich information around what is the current direction or the current status? And some notes and resources? So it really became kind of a one-stop shop that if you have any question about what's going on with these, that links to any meetings where there's been decisions or minutes where there's been decisions or laws that might need to change, we've tried to put those, those all in here. So that's one. An area I'd like to call attention to is the path. Because as you know, the last time we were here, we were talking about how do we actually break these recommendations up into buckets or levels of, you know, what are the easier ones and what are the harder ones? And every single time, we've tried to sort those by complexity or by... It's, it's just gotten really... What's really emerged as the easiest way to sort things is by the path that it needs to follow if it's going to change. And so that really kind of became, you know, keeping them just in the order they're at and the way that they're in the report, but they're kind of bundled in this pathway. You can ask more questions about that. So this is a good example of that. So path here is internal policy. And what that really means for us is if something feels like it's already clearly within my authority, or the chief's authority, or the police auditor's authority, or the judge's authority, that those are, those are internal policies that, that we're working through. And as you can see from, from the first couple of pages, there's a lot of work that's been happening, a lot of things that are, are complete, a lot of things that are underway, clearly a lot of things that still need analysis because we have the same people doing the work on, on all of these items. You'll also see that there's places where a lot of interaction with the police commission, they're picking up a lot of these items as part of their work plans. We're coordinating closely with that. And then there's places where the state is considering changes and we're coordinating closely with that. So we've tried to also link all of that so people can, can find all that information. Now, one of the other things that's become really clear about this, this matrix or status report is that it's going to be in a consistent state of refresh. And I, and I like to say that because even, even under our, even without the ad hoc recommendations, our police policies are consistently being refreshed. Things change, laws change. And these things may get revisited more than once. So it's really hard to check a box and say it's done because we may come back. And some of the recommendations were really pretty deep. There's, there's a lot buried in there that we, we will consistently be coming back to again. So that's, it's, it'll be live. It'll be on the website. And we'll go in probably every couple of months and make sure it's updated so people can track what we're at. So as you go down the list, I was just going to pull out the path. There's just a couple of places where the path is different. So for example, there's a number of items that are, that we've called legislative priorities, or they have intergovernmental relations or multi-jurisdictional relationships. And in those, we don't have direction or status on those yet, but we've tried to include all the info and resources about what would need to change, what would be lobbied. And there'll be a recommendation about this at the end. The other area is, as you kind of move down the list, is there's areas where the city code would need to change or the charter would need to change. Those are all items that are, they're not within my authority to change. Those are within your authority to change. And so we've tried to at least put the resources in here about what it would be. And we'll be having conversations with you about how, how you might want to approach those. So today, what we're hoping for, I wasn't going to go through line item by line item, but to get some feedback on the updated matrix, make sure that's working for everybody. If there's questions about specific updates, we have folks, subject matter experts here. And we hope to get some directions on next steps. The steps that I placed that are in the AIS are two things that we feel like could be just taken on right away, which is all of the IGR items feel like they're going to need additional analysis information. You're going to need to learn more about them to determine whether or not you want to put those in your legislative priorities. And it seems like the best time to do that would be at the end of this year, when you're kind of getting ready for the long session. So that would give us time to go through that, provide that information to the council, and then you can make a determination in the fall if you want to add those. The second large group of items were related to civilian oversight, the civilian, the, the review board. All of those items felt like they would be best initiated with a good grounding in the history and status of our current oversight system, which includes the police auditor and the civilian review board and the whole thing. And it felt like that would be a good place for you to start. So with that, I think I'll just stop sharing and allow you to have your conversation, ask questions. We're all here for you.
Thank you very much. I, I just, I'm, I'll be interested to hear what counselors have to say, but I just wanted to start out by saying that I very, very much appreciate the clarity and the simplicity of this matrix. Like, it was very easy to read through and understand, at least at a high level, where, where we are with each of these. So I, I know that was challenging to figure out how to distill so much complicated information into one form and glad that that proceeded. And I just want to acknowledge that Matt sent a note that this currently isn't being streamed on YouTube this meeting, but Nia is working on it. So, okay. I have Alan up, up first, and then Claire.
I was wondering if either Leah or Judge Gill had any comments before I comment, since they were part of the sorting committee?
I'll jump in because mine's pretty easy. I don't have anything to add. I think city managers summed that up really articulately because there was a lot of hours that went into just being able to give that short segment. And so I don't have anything else to add to that.
Yeah, I, I want to echo what Judge Gill just said. Sarah did a lot of heavy lifting on this, and it was a lot of work. And I think we'll probably end up speaking more about my piece, but I think the thing that came through a lot for me in the ad hoc meetings was that education and outreach around our system as it currently is and why it is how it is could be really helpful going forward. So that's, that's sort of where we, where we grounded that. So I'm going to try to speak as little as possible because my voice sounds real bad, at least to me. So, thanks, everybody.
Your voice sounds fine. Okay, well, thank you, all three of you and all the, I know the rest of the, there's a bunch of staff work that's gone into this. Really good work. I think if we had a Harry Potter sorting hat, it probably would have gone faster, but that's not reality. This is a very challenging task to have done. So I sat in on almost all of the deliberations of the ad hoc committee on police policy. And the range of recommendation goes from quite, goes from simple to exceedingly complex. And the amount of thought, homework, and discussion also ranged from a little to some. Unfortunately, there were so many recommendations that the, the, the process didn't allow for the type of, I think, in-depth conversation, discussion, and analysis that many of these proposals need in order to make a decision about them. The, the simplified matrix kind of actually hides the complexity of a lot of this. But I appreciate it because it allows us to talk about it in a reasonable way. So I, I, I like what happened with the sorting. I approve of that and the work done so far. I want to celebrate the things that we've already done so far. Some of those were almost done immediately. You know, great minds think alike. They were easy to do and, and done. So we've almost got 20% of the stuff is already implemented or, or almost implemented. So that's, we heard what people were saying and the stuff that was easily implementable, we did, that were good ideas. And then there's a whole slew of ones that are under review and need more analysis. And that isn't easy because these are complicated. And, and we have limited resources and they need more work. And, and then there, finally, there's the last items that need council direction. And I think the, the two motions move us in the right direction towards moving those along as well. So these just are not simple things. It's not a simple matter of just saying yes to everything. They need a lot more analysis, background discussion, and, and by the council in order to move them either forward or not. And I don't imagine that all of them will move forward. So I hats off to the group for the hard work that they did in the many hours they put in pulling this together. I think you did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire, and then Randy.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, City Manager, Judge Gill, our police auditor, and all the staff that worked with you to do this important work. And thanks to the sounding board as well. And just a little perspective on, I know the three of you in particular held several meetings to try to figure this out and did a lot of work. And then you ended up pivoting away from the original concept towards this. And I'm sure all of you recognize that that's sometimes just what has to happen and that that was not a waste of your time, that you had to go through that initial kind of work first and didn't end up using it. So I know sometimes that can be very frustrating. So I think what you've produced for us in, in terms of a layout that's accessible and responsive is very, very good. It, I, I really appreciate all the links in there so that folks who have a keen interest in this out in the community can easily look at it and, and track for themselves how what we're doing connects with other things. And, you know, whether that's state policy or, or our internal policy or whatever it is. And so I absolutely agree, you know, with what the city manager said, that this, this will be a document that is updated because there, there are moving parts. There are things moving that we are not involved in at the state legislature, even at the federal level. And so as those things happen, we'll want to be able to capture that. I definitely support the two motions that the city managers recommended for us today to, to move us forward in the work. On the police auditor history review, I would like that to include, you know, kind of the, the original charter change, the ballot measures that were passed subsequent to that, how the office established its protocols and policies, and how it interacts with internal affairs. So those are some, some things that I think should be included in there. And then I appreciate what Alan was saying about the complexity here. I know we've received advocacy that said, you know, the ad hoc committee spent so much time on this work and you should just adopt their recommendations now, all of them. I don't actually believe that would be responsible for us to do. There are many paths in terms of reaching the goals that the recommendations seek out. And I think we also need to do our due diligence in looking at each recommendation and whether and how we would want to adopt that. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Randy.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to echo my colleagues' comments, opening comments here and really thank the city manager, judge, auditor, and all at our police chief for really diving into this. Like all of us, I've been waiting to see what would come out of this in a cogent way of approaching what is a very complex situation. And I, Sarah, I think this matrix, it exceeds my expectations. I, I tried to think this through myself and I, I just, it just kept getting more complex as I tried to get into it. So anyway, I also want to praise EPD for being proactive on this. And having worked many years alongside our police department in my prior life, I, I have always seen them as a proactive organization. And I think that sometimes, unfortunately, they get dragged down from a national perspective rather than looking at the, the sum total of the work that's actually done here locally. It's not to say it's a perfect system, but we work in an imperfect world. With that said, I am concerned, having been on some large policy rewrite initiatives myself, I know that when you get into policies like this, everything you touch has a ripple effect. And just from a workflow standpoint, I'm, I'm interested to know if, if there's any sense of what percentage of the work has these ripple effects? And I guess what I'm trying to do is temper public expectation as well as this council's expectation about how far, how fast we can move. You know, it's a, my, my predecessor used to say, do you want it quick? Do you want it cheap? Or do you want it right? And I think this is something we need to get right. So I want to quote Chris Pryor on that. And I, I think that's something we need to kind of keep a lens on as we go through this, this process. I think it's, it's just too important that we get it right. And there's going to be far-reaching consequences that can come from the actions that are being taken here. And, and we need to make sure we understand what those are. But anyway, getting back to my question about workflow, does anyone have any thoughts on that? And again, this is more, I'm not trying to dive into the work myself, but just, just so we have a good idea of timing.
So the chief can probably talk more through the ones that are, fall in that internal policy piece of, you know, we, you can kind of see the things that are, that are underway and things that need analysis and haven't been staff-resourced yet. And it's, I think those things are just going to take a little bit of time to get through. The, I'll say the ripple effects conversation is something we spend a lot of time talking about because as, as the sorting team, as we were trying to check those boxes, that's why it was like, oh, well, we checked this and this, and this is connected to that. And we did try to highlight those. I think as we get deeper into this work, those, those ripple effects are, are going to come up in our, in our status updates as we get farther in. So for example, the legislative work, there's a number of things on the, that they asked for you to lobby for that when we start to do that analysis and that workflow on that is, we'll work on it through the, the summer and we'll start sending you information in the fall. That, that's going to start to highlight ripple effects that you'll be able to make a choice. Do we want to lobby for this? Or don't we want to lobby for this? But we felt like the analysis needs to point you in that direction so you can make those decisions, knowing what those all are. I mean, that may not have exactly answered your question.
I'm not sure you can exactly answer my question. I was just, I was just trying to get a feel for this. And, and I would submit that the external components of this are going to have ripple effects, just like the internal policy pieces. But it's, it's just, again, that's been my experience. And then I saw that again after retirement as a consultant and trying to help organizations go through policy revisions. It is a complicated endeavor, a necessary one, but a complicated endeavor. And so, again, I just wanted to emphasize that. Thank you again.
Thank you. Matt, and then Emily.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And thanks, City Manager and team for putting this together. And there's a piece of one of the recommendations that would provide a stipend for civilian review board members. And I would just put myself in the camp, Mayor, of an enthusiastic yes for all of our boards and commissions to have some semblance of a stipend, considering the massive amount of work that goes into, into our, our now volunteer boards and commissions. I, I'm, I want to thank Counsel Groves for reading my mind in regards to timelines. That was the one, the one piece that was, that was missing. And it's, you know, Randy and I are big baseball fans. It dawned on me that, you know, there's no timeline in baseball. There's just nine innings. Game could go as long or as short as possible. A, a, a good portion of the IGR, the intergovernmental relations work, lobbying our lawmakers in Salem, at the very earliest, we would see implementation of some of the, the reforms in front of us would be 90 days after signing die of the 2023 legislative session, more likely January 1st, 2024. But whether it's the IGR legislative priorities, the charter review, the city code, potential city code changes or internal policy review and adoption of changes, are there just some, some, some rough timelines that could be expressed for either of those particular pathways? So we can have a, a good sense of, of when we will see implementation of the range from any to all. And I suspect that Counsel Zelenka is right, clearly, of all the recommendations that, you know, all 52 recommendations, it's highly unlikely that they'll be all adopted. But are there, in, in those particular buckets or, or categories or, or realms of pathways of responsibility? Could some of our, as Counsel Zelenka likes to say, certified, smart folks in the room, give us a, a good snapshot of reasonable timelines?
I don't know if I'm certified in the way that you're looking for. But that one's really tough to answer because even if we could say roughly, if you decided that you wanted to move forward with a code amendment, here's how long a process like that would take, right? We could do that. Like typically, it would include this, 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 and that timeline can be three to six months, whatever that is. But that suggests that you're going to, that from the time you say go, that's harder for me to know. Are you going to say go on that this fall, next year, maybe never? So it's, it's, it's harder. So if what you're looking for is these processes generally take about this amount of time, we can do that for sure. If you're looking for when can we expect to see this in front of us? I think that's going to be, I, I'd have to ask you that same question as when are you going to want, when does the full council want to see this or a majority of the council want to see this before you? Hard for me to predict that.
Is there anyone else before I dive into a follow-up?
Oh, anybody else on the...
Any, any other certified smart people, card-carrying members? Seeing none, it's my understanding that the reference number 31, the pathway would be a, a motion or a work session in regards to the city council engaging the community in evaluating civilian oversight structure. To Counsel Saret's point, taking our time in doing this right is prudent. I don't want to put words in your mouth, Counsel, but that was my interpretation of your, 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 your comments. And I concur. But reference number 31 seems to be the one piece that council could take some immediate action and, and start that ball rolling. Is that a fair assessment, Manager Medary?
I, I think it's a fair assessment that you could, you know, on those items where you can do a motion, you could certainly do that. I think the intent behind the next steps process would be that before you did that, you'd have some time to understand just amongst yourself, what's the current status? And then that could help inform how you want to do community engagement and what that might look like and who you want to engage. And so that's the part where it's, it's harder to, to know. Like, no, I'm not, I'm not trying to avoid your question. I just, you're, you're experiencing exactly what we experience as a team, which is it's, there's just a lot to each one of these.
Okay. Thank you. I, I, I don't want to dive into the weeds for the sake of conversation, allowing some of our other colleagues, some of my colleagues to have time. I just want to conclude my thoughts with sincere appreciation for the ad hoc committee on police policy update, members. Thanks.
And Counsel Keating, and Counsel, I'm going to jump in just really quickly, although I'm sure City Manager is holding her breath. It's like, I don't know what he's going to say now. But I think those two questions, Counsel Keating, were very appropriate to put together in terms of asking for that rough timeline. And then going to reference number 31. Because once you, so when I think the police auditor educates all of us on the history of the review board and how these things came about, that education piece is going to be the, probably the real big beginning of a lot of the substantial work going forward. And it's going to be an example of that education piece for everybody on everything that's going to take deliberation on everything that's going to take deliberation and time to learn about. So, you know, in Counselor Pryor's quote there, I think the council will probably and the subgroups or however this ends up dividing itself is going to be hearing from other folks who are really knowledgeable in these fields. So those ripple effects that you were talking about can be readily identified. I know for a fact that there's not, there isn't any way that I would be able to identify, you know, a small fraction of what those ripple effects might be from the adoption of any of these recommendations as they are. But I would definitely want to hear from those people that have either direct knowledge of what it might be, have expert knowledge on what it might be. And that process just takes a lot of time. And so that measure, that number 31 is going to be that kickoff point for that education piece to really begin. And I think it's going to be when we, when everybody has the information that they need to be able to deliberate and make a sound decision moving forward will be when that is and try to go as efficiently as possible. But putting a time estimate on that is really hard to do because we need to first identify who those experts are, who it is that we need to hear from, what, how many perspectives are going to be part of those learning processes and and all that put together. So I just wanted to throw that out there just in terms of the asking or the looking for potential timeline, because I think it's sort of an evolution itself to determine what those timelines might be.
Thanks, Judge.
Thank you. Emily and then Jennifer.
I love charts and I really like this one. You did a great job filling in and well, changing the squares to a more usable format. And I really appreciate the work it must have taken to go from our initial list from the Ad Hoc Committee, whom I appreciate very much. This is a tremendous amount of time taking work. So what I can really see, though, from this is that it's going to be a lot more time taking work. This is complicated. Some of the things I'm great with, a few of them I have some troubles with. But mostly what it shows us is is we've made some starts, the things that we could do right away, we've done that. I appreciate that. But wow, there were 14 that needed more analysis and I didn't count up all the ones that need a charter change. So these aren't easy, quick things to, if you say, I really like it, let's just do it. So I think that's eye opening, not not that I thought the original list would be easy or fast, but we do need to do this right. This is a subject that we can't do quickly or cheaply. We have to do it right. So we need to be prepared for that to take some time and to keep coming back to it and to watch it evolve and to keep getting input from the entire community. So this is the opening gate of a very long journey, I think, but it will be fascinating. And it will have some really beneficial effects for for all of us, but some parts of our community in particular, which it's really time for us to do that. So good job and everybody get lots of sleep. Thanks.
Thank you. Jennifer and then Mike.
Thanks, Mayor. So this might be a question for Kevin, and I saw he was here today. I'm wondering if we have any definite plans at this point for checking back in with our Ad Hoc Committee. We made some commitments to continue keeping them in the loop and and I think the best engagement always checks back with people once to make sure that you got their feedback, right? So maybe Kevin, you can talk a little bit about that.
Sure. Thank you, Counselor. At this point, we don't have anything on the calendar. So we have been in kind of informal communication with some of the members of the Ad Hoc Committee, but nothing structured or, you know, on the calendar.
I'll just add to that. Not yet, because the motion that you passed in the fall, our last set of motions said we would meet with them again in May. So we'll be meeting with them in May.
Okay, great. That is excellent to hear. I appreciated what Counselor Grove said about how policy takes time. And, you know, Alan and I are on the Police Commission, so I can testify that it does in fact take multiple months just to get through one policy. I think we've already talked about this, but I'm very glad to report the Police Commission anticipated that we might be asking them to take on some additional policies. And so they've tried to leave space in their in their work plan to be able to add stuff in, which I think is great, although there's quite a few that I noticed were for to go to the Police Commission. So getting them done this year may be difficult. They do. They take quite a bit of time. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and that it takes a lot of work for folks to make it through these policies. And and I do appreciate Counselor Keating bringing up number 21, because it's one of the ones that if we chose to do it, has an extended timeline to of completion, right? So get it making a determination of that something we want to do sooner rather than later is probably really important, or at least I feel that it's it's really important and might be an opportunity to use a model like our healthy democracy model in this area, should we decide to do that. But thanks, and I appreciate staff's willingness to pivot on the chart. It was we had some really great conversations in the steering committee, and it was clear that it just wasn't quite working. But figuring out what would work is not easy. And I really appreciate when you guys came back with this new idea. And I'm glad to hear that the other counselors like it as well. It's very, very easy to understand, and I appreciate it.
Okay, Mike, and then we have a few second rounds.
Thank you, Mayor, and Sarah and all others. Thank you to all the staff members who worked on this to this point. Congratulations, the idea of changing form. I think it's a more useful way to approach the work. As to form, because I think that's where we are right now, is kind of the the form of how this moves forward. There's only one piece for me that doesn't get captured in in the in the current structure of how this stuff is laid out. And I I don't know how someone would do this. I don't know how you would work to edit someone else's language. But for me, there's an insufficient listing of the problem that this recommendation is there to fix. So when I when I look at these series of recommendations and say, these are the these are the pathways and the potential, you know, issues involved in us making changes here. For me, I'd like to see with each of those some manner of representation of the committee's work and discussion that says this is a problem for us, and so we think the solution is to and then these are the steps one would need to take in order to do that. Does that make sense, Sarah?
Yeah, I totally totally does. In fact, when we were talking about, you know, when we're talking about the next steps around either analysis for legislative work or anything that we bring forward to you, we we've talked about how we need to re revisit that and restate the problem that we're trying to fix and and all the different things that connect with that. So one of the issues with the recommendations, and I think it'll it'll be a lot of text to have in a chart like that.
Right.
Not all of the recommendations followed that format of here's the problem we're trying to fix. So it's a little bit inconsistent across the group. But I think linking to that of I mean, you could link the chart to it, but for sure, when things come back to you for more analysis, we will include that.
Okay, thank you. Like I said, I wouldn't want the job of trying to interpret someone else's work and discussions that were so important to have and took so much time and effort on their behalf and try and, you know, restate what it was that they intended here. So that's how to reengage that committee in in that process would be important, too. And then lastly, although again, I we're verging on swamping the form again with too much. But in the decision making process of, you know, what's the problem? What are the potential solutions to the problem? What will it take for us to implement those solutions? The last piece for me in an analysis in a general sense like that is, and then how do we measure that we successfully solved the problem? How will we measure if these changes actually brought about the 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 solution to the problem in the first place? Or, you know, how will we know if we made it worse? So I I the metrics for how we look at what we may or may not do, I think also needs to be part of the discussion. So thank you.
Thank you. I guess I have Alan, then Matt, then Claire for second round.
Yeah, thanks for queuing that up, Mike. Early on in the process, but after we established the committee, I suggested that the the committee's work revolve around answering three questions with regard to all the things that they were going to recommend. And those three questions were, what is the problem we're trying to fix? What specifically are you suggesting that we change? And then how will that change solve the problem with the outcome? Or how are you going to measure? And unfortunately, it didn't didn't get as widely used as I would like to have it occur on a lot of these recommendations by the in the deliberations of the committee. But I think when having those questions answered as we move forward are going to be really critical. So I hopefully that can be part of the context of how we how we move forward on each of these. With regard to the motions, the the motion on the history background status of the CRB, actually, I think that's going to be multiple work sessions, because I don't think that's a simple thing either. It's actually a long history. I think that that process actually starts the education of the public on this and engages them in this. So and it goes beyond just the committee into to the broader community. And and so we'll actually have decided to move forward on number 31 by making this motion. So I think that's the first step is is having a work session about the history background status is going to be engaging the community because they'll be watching it and engaging in it. Unfortunately, all of the 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 setup of the of of the CRB and the auditor was set up before Mike and I got here. But and unfortunately, one of the originators of that was Counselor Ortiz, who's no longer with us. But I learned a lot from her, just talking to her about where this came from and how this worked. And so that kind of background would be really helpful. When I started, we got into the pay arc, which was the refinement of the CRB that ended up in a in a motion or a a referendum that that refined the CRB process. So this history of how we got here is really important here. It was very hard fought, lots of bumps in the road, but we finally landed on a process that I think almost everybody liked. And there's still some tweaks that could be made to it and how and how it operates. But it generally is recognized around the country as the best system in the in the whole US on how to do a civilian review board and a police auditor. And so I think that context needs to be a very big part of when we have the discussion about the the CRB and where it's where we think it should go. Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you. Matt and then Claire.
Thanks, Mayor. I refrained from getting wonky and wobbly in my first round, but apologies ahead of time for for doing so here in the second round. I I'd like to hone in on reference numbers 37 and 43. They, to me, there's there's significant overlap between the two. Yet one pathway is through the IGR, Intergovernmental Relations Legislative Priorities path. The other pathway for reform is through city code, Chapter 4. Am I to understand that making Eugene a quote, no open carry zone can be achieved through city code and not the legislative process statewide? And I have a follow up in regards to those two reference points.
I'm going to ask Catherine to answer this, but I want to just preload it with this is one where we had significant conversation about the ripple effects. And so I don't know if we'll get into that in the answer, but I think that the technical answer, Catherine, is probably best.
So anything that we could do through our city code would be within the existing state statutory construct that significantly limits local government authority over the carrying of weapons. So anything you would do within us, within the city code would be limited to people that do not possess a concealed weapons permit. And so when, if if you're making any changes, if you were to make changes to your open carry laws, that would only apply to people that do not possess a concealed weapons permit based on this, the way the state statute is currently written, which is entirely preemptive of local governments from regulating anybody that holds a concealed weapons permit. And just because someone holds a concealed weapons permit, it also doesn't require they conceal it. So someone could open carry with a concealed weapons permit, and the city would have no authority currently to do anything about that. So the one about the legislative priority would be seeking changes to give local governments more authority to regulate what they're currently preempted from doing. So that's why the two are distinguished.
Appreciate the clarification. What if a municipality? So let's let's string it down from the entire city into the municipal offices. What if that said municipality operates in a collegiate controlled facility? I don't know, like LCC downtown? How would that affect our potential future in person public meetings? Are we able to adopt the collegiate policy in regards to no open carry, even though the municipality isn't charged to do so by the state? But the the collegiate entity is empowered by recent state law?
Well, that's a very, it's it's a very specific question, so I don't want to give you a general answer for a specific question, but this it wouldn't, something that authorizes a educational institution from adopting something wouldn't give us the authority to then adopt something similar. I think your question is, would that apply to a meeting being held in that building? And that I'll just want to take a specific look at that and see how that, because I I don't typically look at the stuff that only applies to the educational facility. So but I'm happy to do that, and I can get you a very specific answer because it wouldn't give us the authority to adopt something, but maybe that the regulation that applies to the building might might apply.
Thanks. I would hope it would. Thank you, Catherine. Quickly, I want to shift gears a bit. If I could ask Chief Skinner a question about reference number 23. Reference 23 talks about drug testing officers after an incident that results in serious injury or death. If 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 Chief, if you could just talk about the reasonable suspicion when an officer is involved in such an incident. I'm fuzzy on 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 that piece, and I would think that any incident that ultimately results in in serious injury or death would would rise to the level of, quote, reasonable suspicion. You know, I again, I apologize for getting into the weeds, but it seems like an important piece. And I would hope a slam dunk in regards to the internal policy path. But could you talk about where we're at with that piece and what work has been done leading up to this point?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Keating. I'm happy to happy to share some thoughts on that. So the concept of reasonable suspicion as it pertains to this particular recommendation is that if there is reasonable suspicion to believe an officer is under the influence of any kind of intoxicant, we have the ability to mandatory test that officer for those intoxicants under any circumstance right now. That's the way it exists right now. Whether this is somebody walking in the back door with an odor of alcohol in their breath, all the way to our most serious type of critical incident like serious injury or death. If there's something to suggest that an officer is under that influence, we have the ability to test right now. I think the intent or the spirit of what this recommendation was to force mandatory testing on any officer who is involved in a critical incident that resulted in serious physical injury or death, regardless of whether we believe that officer had consumed those intoxicants. And I think what we what's important to note is that we have that standard right now under reasonable suspicion. And as you can imagine, this is a significant bargaining issue with our labor group on mandatory and in some cases randomized drug testing. Many of our critical incidents involve a multitude of individuals that were involved there. And so we would have to do some analysis around what this looks like in bargaining, what this looks like to narrow the field of who would be subject to this mandatory drug testing in this particular case. So I think at this point, that's why I think more analysis is needed.
Very helpful. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to have a second round and appreciate the more in depth conversation about potential policy changes. Thank you.
Okay, Claire and then Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so just wanted to weigh in on a couple of things my colleagues have raised on the recommendation about community involvement on what the civilian oversight should look like. If we did, in fact, select some of the recommendations around the civilian oversight infrastructure that need to be done through a charter amendment, that would seem an obvious time to deliberately have citizen engagement. You know, if we're shaping up something that would be going to the ballot. And I like Counselor's suggest, yay, suggestion of, you know, maybe modeling after our healthy democracy work. And then I really appreciate the things that Mike brought up. I had struggled with some of the recommendations, in in fact, including the one that Counselor Keating just mentioned about drug testing. What is the problem this is trying to address? I mean, do we have a history of our officers being intoxicated in knowingly before they've executed some kind of critical response? I'm not aware of that. It seemed that seemed to me a little bit of a of a solution in search of a problem. And then the additional question of how do we measure success? And so I think what the city manager suggested that those could be framings that are offered to us as council as we look at the particular individual recommendations. I think Counselor Clark is right. It's challenging to characterize the Ad Hoc Committee members statements around these. But if there were explicit statements associated with a recommendation from the members of the committee who said, you know, we've identified associated with a recommendation from the members of the committee who said, you know, we've identified this as an issue and we believe this recommendation will solve it, then if, if we can make sure that's part of our AIS or the presentation, that, that would be great.
Thank you. And Mike.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Claire. I, I appreciate the follow-through of all of that to the logical conclusion that I, I didn't do, which is I'd really like all of that to be a part of the AIS so that we have that kind of background when we're considering these one by one. I, I would, I would assume that some of the information that we'll receive when making and, and, and weighing these decisions individually in these, these issues one by one, cost of implementation will, will probably be at least some part of that information. So that we know if there's a, you know, if, if doing so creates a significant budget effect. For me, I'd also like us to have information at that time in that AIS as it's, as it's appropriate for, for the likelihood of, I don't know how to put this, not the likelihood of a fight, perhaps the likelihood of a lawsuit. If we have identified groups already, you know, councillor Keating brought up a couple of things where I, I could find it very, very easy to imagine that as soon as we put that in place, there'll be lawsuits the next day filed to, to stop us or to do something about it. So I, I would, I would hope that we have some way to capture some sense of both the, you know, public conflict cost as well as the actual in dollars cost of, of any of these changes as it pertains to the, the level of controversy when we start down that road. I, I don't know how you catch all of that, but it was another piece of this that I thought was important we talk about. So thank you.
I would, the way I'm thinking about that is what we talked about even in the last work session. I think it's sort of potential risks and maybe unintended consequences. And we can try to highlight those that we may not get them all.
Thank you all for this. Before I put the, allow the motions to go on the table, I just wanted to say a couple of things. This has been a really great conversation and it's really a credit to all of you who put the matrix together to create a format which we can have a reasonable conversation because we can see clearly where we are and where we're going. And, and a kind of reminder that, that the, one of the good decisions that that you made in constructing the matrix was recognizing it doesn't have to contain everything. It has to contain enough and it has to contain enough links that people can reasonably follow it. And the one thing that you know, maybe too much of a fine point on things is that, you know, looking at recognizing that many of these, a number of these are already in motion, a certain amount has already happened, but this is still a living document. This is living work. Things will be changed. So I'm just wondering just if, if you just look at reference number one overhaul EPD crowd control, policies have been updated. There's a link to those policies that are being updated. And so the question in the mind of the public is, so are we done? Or is there actually, are there still some things on the table that might still get another review? And so I guess the question I have is if there's a room for a column in here that says next steps or pending or something like that, so that there's just a placemaker to say, yep, it, we, we've done a chunk of this work. You know, so, and I, and I don't know whether that's going to be more confusing or not, but it just is my thought about is sort of making it clear to the public. And then I, I also, you know, recognizing that each one of these, as everyone has says, is a major project in undertaking in itself. There's background information. There's current status. There's opportunities, there's challenges, there's, you know, there's a whole, each one is a dissertation. And so I'm just wondering as we go forward, if you will think about a kind of a standard format for that information that as you move forward on each of these recommendations. So there's a link to it on the website and it's in a sort of a predictable form. And so the public can grasp it a little bit more easily and, because it's a lot to contain. So those are, those are my two thoughts and and with that, I think I'm ready to turn it over to Claire to put a motion on the table.
Okay. Move to direct the city manager to provide additional review, analysis and information on all items marked for intergovernmental action on attachment B prior to the setting of the city's 2023 legislative priorities.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, wait, one, one, two, three, four, five, six. Got it. Got them all. Seven. Thank you very much. None, none opposed. And the second motion?
Move to schedule a work session on the history and status of the city's current civilian oversight system prior to July seventeen, twenty twenty two.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and that passes seven to nothing. Thank you all very much. Really, it's such thorough work. It's so thoughtful. It's so deliberative. It's very respectful of the work that the ad hoc committee did and really appreciate where we are and look forward to the next step. So thank you all very much. And with that, you have just gotten another half hour in your day. We are adjourned.